Welcome to the regular meeting of the Forsyth County Board of Commissioners. It's a delight to have everyone with us, have a good crowd in the Commissioners' meeting room, and we are preparing for the holidays. Christmas is right around the corner. We have a lot of business to take care of today, however, and to begin this meeting, I'll turn the rest of the opening remarks over to our Vice Chairman, Don Martin.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and I certainly hope and pray that your eye conditions improve and you can take back over this part of the meeting. We will begin our meeting today with an invocation from Sister Stacy Gifford, Church of Jesus Christ of Latter-day Saints, and it will be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance led by Commissioner Whizen-Hunt. And Sister Gifford, you may begin. Here we are. Welcome.
Our dear Heavenly Father, we are thankful for this beautiful day that Thou has given us. We are thankful for this country that we live in and for the freedoms that we enjoy. We're thankful for our local leaders and pray that they can be guided to make the best decisions for our community. We pray for all those in attendance at this meeting and for all citizens of Forsyth County that they might find peace and comfort this holiday season. Again, we're grateful for all that Thou has given us, and we say these things humbly in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Sister Gifford. Any citizen who is interested in participating in the public session portion of this meeting, we have a number for you to call, 336-422-1200. That number again is 336-422-1200. You will be placed on hold until the public session begins, so be patient, and you will be selected in the order in which you call. Members of the audience who are interested in participating in the public session portion of the meeting, please fill out a green speaker card and return to the clerk at the end. Mrs. Sloop, she'd be happy to receive that. Now we're ready for our weekly COVID-19 update, and we have our Public Health Director, Joshua Swift, and he may be, he's on the line. You're up, Joshua.
All right. Good afternoon, Commissioners. Thank you for giving me this moment to give a brief report. I'll pull up the presentation right now. It should be coming up on your screen. Can I get confirmation? Can you see that?
Yes.
Okay, wonderful. Thank you. So today, we reported 135 cases of COVID-19 in Forsyth County, and our cases per day now is 120. That's our average over the last 14 days. So that is, we have went up 58% in the past two weeks, number of cases per day. You can see that we're at 9% positivity. Our total deaths since the beginning of the pandemic is 598. Put this into perspective, the year 2020, we had just over 250, around that many deaths. So we've had more deaths in 2021 than we had in 2020. Thankfully, those have slowed down considerably over the past few weeks. Percent of the population is fully vaccinated is now 70%. That's a milestone, and 74% of the population is partially vaccinated. Our COVID cases per week, you can see we had 737 cases the week of December the 5th. So we are nowhere near our peak that we saw during Delta in late August, but we have been going up consistently from week to week, and we expect really that it will keep going up over the holidays and into the new year. Our percent positivity, it went down this past week, but we want to see if that's a trend that continues or if it stays level or continues to rise as it did the previous weeks before. Our vaccination status, you've seen this before, looking at the vaccination status by race and by age, you can see 19% of our 5- to 11-year-olds, that's the newest group that's been eligible for vaccine, has now gotten their first dose, and 12% have gotten their second dose. This is in line with the state rate across all of North Carolina, but I would also draw attention that, and it's hard to notice from week to week unless you're in these numbers, but the numbers keep going up from week to week. Like this week, the 50- to 64-year age group went from 76% fully vaccinated to 77. So it goes up a little bit, a little bit, each week as more and more people get their first and second doses. We don't have data to show what percentage of the county's population by age or race has booster shots yet. So we don't have that data from the state. Vaccine, we have many appointments available here at the Health Department. We did 800 appointments last week. It looks like we're going to have 600 to 700 appointments this week. Boosters are now available for anyone 16 and older. That has to be six months since you've had Moderna or Pfizer, or two months after Johnson &amp; Johnson. Public Health, we've had a focus every Saturday in November and December on children, especially the 5- to 11-year-olds. We're going to be doing that again this Saturday, the 18th. Appointments are required, but you can go online. There's plenty of appointments available now, or you can call. Next slide, just a recap of some of the vaccine outreach that has happened over 2021. Public Health has conducted 136 community outreach events focused primarily on three ZIP codes, 27101, 105, and 107, but we have been from Rural Hall to Lewisville to Kernersville and all parts in between since 12/23/2020, so almost a year. Next week will be a year. We have administered over 115,000 doses of COVID vaccine. It was a year ago today that the first doses in the United States came to Baptist Hospital, and they started their vaccine this week, a year ago. Also a reminder that from July to October of this year, we distributed over 31,000 gift cards for vaccine, and Public Health will be taking walk-ups for ages 12 and up from 12 to 6 this Saturday during Christmas for the city at the Benton Convention Center downtown. This slide just looks at some statistics on cases and deaths for those that are unvaccinated versus those that are vaccinated. What we're seeing, what we're seeing here and across the state and the nation is most cases are primarily unvaccinated individuals, but if you are unvaccinated, you have a five times higher chance of being COVID positive for COVID, and if you're unvaccinated, 13 times higher chance of death from COVID. And two last slides, Omicron variant. We don't have any cases confirmed here in Forsyth County, but we know late last week there was a case confirmed in Mecklenburg County. Currently, it's in 36 states. What we're seeing so far is that it is more contagious, more likely to lead to a breakthrough case, but if you have been vaccinated before, it's likely to be mild. There's a small risk of serious illness to most vaccinated individuals. So like I said, with breakthrough cases, it tends to be mild. Booster appears to make a major difference with protecting from Omicron, and I would encourage people that it cannot only reduce the chances you contract COVID and pass it on to someone who's immune compromised. So with all of our vaccine, whether it's first or second dose, or dealing with booster doses, it may be mild for you, but it could prevent you from spreading it to someone who is immune compromised and may have severe complications. And my last slide, as we head into winter, concerns that we see locally and across from the state level is Delta cases are rising. The cases that are going up now are Delta, but we know that before long, Omicron will come and likely take that over as the dominant variant. Also seeing flu activity. Actions we're encouraging people to take, get the vaccine, even if you haven't had the vaccine yet, get your first and second dose, get your booster if you haven't done that, wear a mask indoors and public, and if possible, with family gatherings coming, to get a test, a COVID test before those family gatherings, just to be safe. So that concludes my presentation. I'd be happy to take questions. And before that, too, just thanks again to all the Public Health staff and the partners who've been working hard, 21 months now and counting. So I appreciate all their work.
Thank you, Joshua. Any questions for our Health Director or comments?
Commissioner Martin, I just wanted to say to Joshua, thank you so very much for the detailed report, as always, and I also have to acknowledge your worth of work this week with the Ministers Conference, and I appreciate you. Teamwork makes the dream work, and having that altar call for those ministers to help advocate the vaccination boosters was very relative. So I wanted to say thank you for the push and pull when we asked you. So it's appreciated.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Thank you very much, Mr. Swift, and we certainly appreciate again all the work of your staff and particularly the teamwork that you recognize every week, and we certainly, certainly hope that our cases, that our data point of one going down, that we can increase that in the, in the couple of weeks ahead. So we'll see you, and actually, it'll be January 6 before we return, and we'll be reading your updates into paper. Thank you very much. The first item on our agenda for today is a resolution approving the 2022 Commissioners Committee Appointment Summary. Everyone's had a chance to review that. It's been out for two weeks. Is there a motion to approve that?
So moved.
Second, Elamine. Good. Motion by Commissioner Plyler, second by Commissioner Elamine. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. The second item on the agenda is a resolution adopting Forsyth County Audit Committee bylaws and internal audit charter. We had a briefing session last week. The Chairman of that committee, Commissioner Linville, gave us a report. Would anyone like for him to repeat that or make further comments?
Move approval.
Thank you, Commissioner Whizen-Hunt. Moves approval.
Second motion.
Second by Commissioner Plyler. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Next item on the agenda is approval of the minutes for the meeting of December 2nd. Everyone has had those. Is there a motion for approval?
Move approval.
Commissioner Plyler moves approval. Commissioner Elamine, seconds. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Next item on the agenda is the public session, and Madam Clerk, do we have any speaker cards or callers?
Yes, Mr. Vice Chairman, we have two callers and five in-person speakers.
Let's do the callers first, since I'm sure they've been holding for a while.
Sure.
Thank you.
Hello, will you please mute your device? Thank you for calling the Forsyth County Board of Commissioners' Public Session Line. This session is for comments only, and questions cannot be answered. Please state your name and address for the record.
Shawan Gabriel.
Thank you. Speakers will be limited to three minutes each, and a 30-second warning will be given. You may begin.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. My name is Shawan Gabriel. I'm President and CEO of Big Brothers Big Sisters Services here in the county. My name is Shawan Gabriel. I wanted to speak to our grant proposal for you all. Big Brothers Big Sisters, we have a mission to create and support one-to-one mentoring relationships that ignite the power and promise of youth. By partnering with parents, guardians, and volunteers in our community, we're accountable for each child in our program, achieving higher aspirations, greater confidence, and better relationships, avoiding some risky behaviors, and overall educational success. We've been in the, we've been in service here in Forsyth County for 45 years. Our program, this, the grant that we've proposed to you will support equity-focused education services that address the disparities children experience during COVID-19. Though education for our children transitioned to digital and broadband space, it's estimated that greater than 30% of the students cannot be reached due to lack of the necessary assets needed at home. This program will provide professionally paid mentors who will focus on building the soft skills for academic success, improving grades and behavior, social emotional literacy, and building healthy relationships with peers and adults. This program, the funds will provide salaries and administrative costs for staffing, materials, and our, to help support our efforts from our national, we know, proven curriculum. We'll focus our work mainly in Title I schools, where we serve kindergarten through 12th graders with a paid mentor. This program will meet in person and virtually based on state mandates for COVID-19. Unlike our traditional programs where adults volunteer their time and are asked to spend a one-year commitment, this program will focus where mentors will agree to work with the most at-risk children as identified by school personnel over the course of five or more years. Children will receive all the benefits of a mentor, including developing those soft skills that I mentioned earlier, but we really want to focus on including that first benchmark, the third grade, when graduation projections are developed and all the way through graduation.
You have 30 seconds.
Again, this is a program that we, we know, we feel great about implementing in our community. It's new, it's needed, and Big Brothers Big Sisters, as a proven lead mentoring agency, would love the support of the Commissioners to begin this program. Thank you for having me today.
You are now available. Thank you.
Please mute the volume on your device, please. Hello.
Hello, how are you?
Can you hear us?
Oh, hello.
Hi. Can you please turn the background noise down?
I'm ready. I'm sorry.
It's okay. Thank you for calling the Forsyth County Board of Commissioners' Public Session Line. This session is for comments only, and questions cannot be answered. Please state your name and address for the record.
Joy Williams, 5059 Butterfield Drive.
Thank you. Speakers will be limited to three minutes each, and a 30-second warning will be given. You may begin.
Hi, this is Joy Williams, and I wanted to continue what I was sharing last week about the, or the last public session about the legacy. I was joining a group in which we were talking about the legacy of Forsyth County, and it struck me how important it is for leaders to not only believe in the wealth and the health and the opportunities for all, but have the unique opportunity that the Commissioners have today. Currently, right now, I'm at a food pantry at the N double A C P, and it's amazing how many people here are believing that our county can do so much with each other. Tomorrow, and I invited all of the Commissioners to attend, an end-of-year celebration where organizations have been working continuously, sometimes in silos, but then sometimes in partnerships. And in specifically, I know that you all have heard me talk about the ARPA funds before, but I just wanted to assure you that your desire to be able to invest in the most vulnerable populations here in the county is not only going to lift up both populations, but everyone in the county. And there's a way that we can do it in which it will breed trust. It will breed an opportunity for people to believe in each other, for people to actually have the hope that this whole county can be lifted up, no matter what your race is, no matter what economic status you are. It will take hard work, yes, but it's something that your legacy can live and that you can believe in and you can create. And it starts not only with the funding sources of small organizations, but the desire to reach out your right hand of fellowship and for these organizations to reach out their right hand of fellowship and to shake over a process that will help us all. Thank you so much for listening to me today, and I pray that you have a wonderful weekend. Thank you.
Bill McLean, please come forward and state your address for the record.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. My name is Bill McLean. I live at 410 Torrey Pines Court here in Winston-Salem. I'm here representing the GIDE Program, Guiding Institute for Developmental Education, as we have, we have applied for the offer grant. And I wanted to come and share with you some of the situations that we're finding in the community, especially in eastern Winston-Salem. There is a great deficit there for job training, job readiness training, career exploration, just a multiplicity of things that will allow residents in that community to find jobs, working jobs. And we want to get these parents involved. We will recruit them. We will interview them. We provide wraparound services to make sure they can get appointments. We're going to teach them interview skills so that they can get jobs afterwards. But we want them to get involved with CDLs, learn how to drive. Many of them have licenses, but they don't use them for anything because they don't have cars. But we could teach them how to drive a bus or drive a van and make them productive citizens. But they're sitting around doing nothing, and we want to provide for them some opportunities for some career training and some opportunities for jobs. Secondly, we work with children. We provide academic services, tutorial services that are provided by certified public school teachers, and we have limited resources, so we can only serve a limited number of children. We work out of the REACH Center, formerly the Winston Lake YMCA, where we have plenty of space. where we have plenty of space. And we want to recruit more children, but we need assistance in order to do that. Our primary focus would be literacy and math. And the third thing, we realize that working with these families, we're not just working with the children, we're not just working with the parents, but we're working with the total family, the mothers, in some cases, the fathers, in most cases, many children, to get them certified to be good students, certified to be good workers, certified to be good citizens by helping them and by training them and getting them involved in productive activities. One thing we're finding out that our kids are very far behind academically. And unless we do something productive, it's going to be a proliferation of gangs in this community. And so our primary focus is to eliminate that. We want to thank you for our, for your consideration of the GIDE program. We work in partnership with Winston-Salem State University's CSEM program and with the Gang Steering Committee. Thank you very much.
Lakeisha Jordan, please come forward and state your address for the record.
Lakeisha Jordan, 3616 Winding Creek Way. I'm, again, Lakeisha Jordan. I'm the Executive Director of WinstonNet here in Winston-Salem. Greetings to our Board of Commissioners, our County Manager, and all staff. The ever-changing world of technology, WinstonNet has been working very hard to bridge the digital divide. When you think about the digital divide, you think about individuals who do not have access, individuals who couldn't go on that Zoom call when it was time, when COVID hit us hard, individuals who could not have the opportunity to make it to their medical virtual appointments because they didn't have the ability to do so. WinstonNet has been working very hard in the background for over 20 years to do just that, bridge the digital divide, but things continue to change. Technology just evolves and evolves and evolves. We couldn't even be on this meeting had it not been for technology. So I know that we all appreciate what technology brings to the table. WinstonNet currently supports 26 computer labs throughout Forsyth County. Many of those labs are placed in nonprofits, churches, and different businesses that you'll hear about through ARPA funding. What we offer in each of these labs is free high-speed access to internet for any community member. WinstonNet has partnered with Forsyth County Libraries back in 2006. And in 2006, we developed a very robust training program for the community. This program meets individuals where they are as it relates to basic digital technology training. So when you can go to any public library or you can register for training with the Computer Training Bridge Program, and even if you just need to learn how to cut your computer on, use your mouse, or if you want to develop a resume, these opportunities are there for you. We also partner with Forsyth Tech Community College, along with the United Way, to provide our computer purchase program, which is called the NET program. This program supports 100 individuals each year with low-cost computers and five weeks of training. So you don't just get a device, you have that training that supports that. So what we propose to do with WinstonNet through our ARPA application is to expand that computer purchase program. We need to ensure that individuals who live in qualified census tracts have the opportunity to purchase computers at a low cost, but have the skills to utilize them. We also would like to increase our footprint as it relates to our computer labs. We'd like to look at three specialty labs. Those labs would offer the opportunity for cybersecurity training, coding for individuals who are living near or working near or just really want to increase their skills, our tech centers. And then lastly, we understand that families and households have devices that are not working. And sometimes, if you don't know what to do with it, you just want to throw the whole thing away. Well, we don't want that, so we want to support our community by a voucher program and working with small businesses and computer repair businesses in our community, hopefully those in qualified census tracts, to provide vouchers to our community members for their computer repair so that they have a working device. This work cannot be done alone. WinstonNet does not have the capacity to do it. So we are partnering with other agencies, other businesses, other individuals to make this happen. And so you'll also hear about the Forsyth County Digital Equity Plan. And with that being said, I do hope that you consider the WinstonNet ARPA application and fund it in full. Thank you.
Martha Allman, please come forward and state your address for the record.
I'm Martha Allman, and I reside at 1905 Faculty Drive. And thank you for letting me speak today on behalf of the Forsyth County Digital Equity Committee. If COVID has taught us anything, it is that online access is essential for full participation in our society, in education, the economy, healthcare, banking, and for our social well-being. We know that digital access is not equitable in this country, nor in Forsyth County. 10% of the households in our county have no computer. 16% have a computer but no internet access. And 22% of the people of color in our county lack internet access, while only 10% of white, non-Latinx residents have no access. The goal of the WinstonNet Forsyth County Digital Equity Committee's ARPA grant request is to close the digital divide and make our county 100% digitally equitable. Through the grant, we and our more than 35 community partners will help provide internet-enabled devices for those without access, hire, train, and embed digital navigators throughout underserved neighborhoods to assist their neighbors with digital literacy, provide wraparound services, including transportation or childcare, to ensure that residents can participate in training and provide job and workforce skills training to support employment opportunities and career advancement for residents. In the spring of 2020, citizens representing the Winston-Salem Foundation, Forsyth Futures, the Winston-Salem Housing Authority, WinstonNet, the City of Winston-Salem, Winston-Salem State, and Wake Forest, and a community representative came together to explore how to tackle digital inclusion. With grant assistance from BAND North Carolina and the Winston-Salem Foundation, we created the Forsyth County Digital Equity Plan. In developing the plan, we assembled 35 community organizations as partners to our steering committee and our grant application. We have all agreed to share resources, staff, and plans to move forward collaboratively, chipping away at the digital divide, all focusing on our marginalized communities. On behalf of the committee, our partners, and the underserved communities in Forsyth County that we represent, I am asking you to support our ARPA application as the next step in implementing the Forsyth County Digital Equity Plan. We have seen and felt the confusion surrounding broadband, funding broadband applications. However, this shuttle, shovel-ready project, which will not build any infrastructure, will financially support nonprofit organizations across the county and impact thousands of households, empowering individuals with the knowledge and tools necessary to better their lives through internet access. Digital equity and inclusion is a civil rights issue of the 21st century. Addressing this issue will have far-reaching benefits for the health, safety, progress, and prosperity of our entire county. Thank you.
John Lawrence, please come forward and state your address for the record.
My name is John Lawrence and I live at 5155 Hillwood Drive, Hornetown, North Carolina. Not here to ask for money. I'm just here to express to you my experience with Forsyth County. I've lived here about two years now. Last year, I attempted to apply for the Disabled Veteran Exclusive Property Tax Relief, which I qualify for as 100% disabled veteran. But I was told by Forsyth Tax Office that I was not eligible for it since my name was not on the house deed. And the only way to fix it is to hire a lawyer, which during COVID was almost impossible. This year, June of 2021, my spouse and I spent a considerable amount of money getting my name added to the, all the deeds. We have four properties. And I walked into the office to file my exclusion. This time, we were told that the deadline was the first of June. The last time we were told it was at the end of June and that my name should have been on the deed on the first of January to qualify. And none of that information was provided to me last year. Also, nobody mentioned the forms I needed from the Department of Veteran Affairs, and that office has been pretty much closed. I was sent in front of some kind of a board in regards to this, that this commission appointed, and I was basically told, oh, well. We'll find out next year whether they take it for a third year in a row. This year, 2021, I applied for a permit for an accessory building. Yet again, the process I've been through was very stressful and inconsistent. Took me almost two months to get the permit. Due to every time I was trying to reach anyone in the office, nobody would return my phone call. Also, you can't go to the office since they are closed to the public, again, due to COVID, although everything else is pretty much open. I started the process of getting the permit in early November, and it was not until December 3rd, when I was able to submit the application online, I was told, when I finally got someone on the phone to tell me even where to start the permit, that I needed a Health Department inspection to get a permit. It took the Health Department several weeks, almost a month, actually, to come and evaluate an empty lot for a metal accessory building with no septic tank or electricity. December 7th, got the notice that my application was declined due to not having a watershed permit, which no one mentioned to me up to that point that I needed one. I was told that the person who declined my application is on vacation, and no one else was able to help me with that part. Then I called and left multiple voice messages for Yolanda Price, and she would, she had not returned any of my phone calls until Mr. Watts's secretary got her on the phone for me, less than five minutes after I'd left a message, by the way. As you can tell, I've been pushed around a lot, and all these, all this was very frustrating. It is sad that public is being treated that way just because in those offices are doing whatever, excuse me, my wife wrote that, and that's not appropriate. That's all I need. Thank you.
Vice Chairman, if I may, sir, if you could see our deputy, our manager, County Manager, please, and he'll assist you with that. Thank you.
He's on my voice, my speed dial, actually, yeah.
I don't want to leave without getting some assistance. Thank you.
Antonio Stevenson, please come forward and state your address for the record.
Antonio Stevenson, 6111 Hampton Meadows Lane, Clemmons, North Carolina 27012. I'm the CEO and co-founder of My Brother's Second Chance. Glad to be here, Commissioners, staff, and guests. Here on behalf of the young men that have been thrown away and cast to the side, I am truly living proof that it takes a village to raise a child. A product of a praying mother, my mother passed away a year and a half ago, Lily Stevenson, and her dream was to see me save kids that were like myself. I was raised on 3918 Cottington in Ebony Hills, my neighbor. And Mr. Martin was one of my mentors. It was easy to throw away a child that exhibited a bad attitude and often didn't know where he was going and had no direction. I had mentors in my neighborhood. The young men that I currently mentor are Carver graduates, East Forsyth graduates. I have 20 young men working right now. I have another 11 attending Carver and have an after-school program that meets at the YMCA, Winston Lake YMCA. We try, we drive these kids around in our own vehicles. When COVID hit, my brother Second Chance didn't sit down. We picked these kids up in our own cars and took them to work. I'm coming to you today because I got a phone call on Monday, and I get these phone calls about every week. Mr. Stevenson, I found a gun or some drugs under my child's bed. The old, Mr. Stevenson was Antonio, and they called me Tiny. They said, come get this gun. The old Tiny would have ran over and got that gun and tried to turn it in like he didn't know there was a law. Well, on Monday, I went over and I called the sheriff deputy. They assisted me in asking this child where this gun came from. After an hour of begging him for answers, he admitted to stealing his father's gun. So his father came and got the gun. When his father came and got the gun, the sheriff department told him, you'll get the gun from us. We're taking this gun until you learn how to store firearms safely, and we're going to check this gun for ballistics. We hope this is your gun that's been in your person the entire time. Young man then said, Mr. Stevenson, I guess I messed up. I said, you're going to get a second chance because you didn't hurt anyone. And I think every young man that looks at the things that goes on in our community needs to understand that guns don't mean you're safe. Guns mean that other people are not safe. That's what we're spreading. I'm boots on the ground. I've been in every neighborhood that has had a casualty, a shooting. When they call me, I get up out of the bed and I go. I got shot on my 20th birthday at N T, North Carolina N T campus. I'm blaming no one but myself. I didn't have to go. But I also spread that word that, you know what, every party is an hour to attend. We have mentors from Wake Forest and Winston-Salem State that come to the YMCA Monday through Thursday and tutor our young men. I think it's going to take a village and then some to raise all of these young men that are lost. And it doesn't mean we threw them away. It means they consider themselves thrown away. So we have to show them love. I thank you all for having me. Any questions?
Mr. Sheriff, I have one question.
Yes, sir.
Tiny, can you bake cakes like your mother did?
I wish. I wish she had taught me the secret recipe, but she did not.
Thank you for your presentation, Tiny.
Thank you.
Antonio, good to see you.
You too, sir. You all have an amazing day.
Thank you.
Mr. Vice Chairman, that was the last speaker.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. It's now time to begin the regular action items. I'll turn the meeting over to County Manager Watts. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chairman. We do have some business items for consideration this afternoon. We have reviewed these in briefing sessions. Hopefully, they've answered all your questions. I'll go ahead and dive into it. You've got a couple of budget and finance items. Item four is an amendment to the FY22 budget to increase revenues and appropriations for Forsyth County Department of Public Health for CDI cancer prevention and control branch funding from North Carolina Department of Health and Human Services. It's really a simple appropriation of some additional funding, a fairly small amount, $135.
Move approval.
Any discussion?
Second.
I got Chairman Plyler moved approval, second by Commissioner Elamine. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Very good. Item five is an amendment to the FY22 budget ordinance to increase revenues and appropriations also for the Forsyth County Department of Public Health for the CDI injury violence prevention branch from North Carolina Department of Health and Human Services. It's additional $10,000 to implement core strategies for opioid, prevention of opioid overdoses.
Move approval.
Approved by Commissioner Plyler.
Elamine second.
Mr. Elamine second. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
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 Very good. Item six is an amendment to the FY22 grants project ordinance to appropriate 2021 Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistant Grant or JAG funds. It's $237,492. As always, we split that with the Winston-Salem Police Department, so there'll be $118,746, and the sheriff intends to use that for the ARPA program.
Move approval.
Approval by Commissioner Plyler, second by Commissioner McDaniel. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Very good. Item seven is a resolution authorizing acceptance of a Community Engagement Boost Award Grant from Forsyth, from Wake Forest Baptist Medical Center to the Forsyth County Department of Public Health to support programs that address substance abuse disorder. And you've got an associated budget order amendment appropriating that $5,000.
Move approval.
Second.
Made by Commissioner Plyler, second by Commissioner Elamine. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
We've got a number of contracts. Item eight is the first one. It's resolution authorizing execution of a contract amendment between Forsyth County Media Placement Services Incorporated to provide advertising outreach and marketing for COVID-19 response to Department of Public Health. This will provide an additional funding of $134,489.90.
Move approval.
Approval by Commissioner Plyler. Approval by Commissioner Pliler.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Alamein. Any discussion? I have one question. Last week, we discussed this. I think I asked for, I'd love to see what we're doing with our, with our, the scope of our advertisement piece.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chairman. So we are working on pulling that together, that report, and should have it by next week so we can send you an email with the information.
Okay, all righty. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Agenda item nine is resolution authorizing an agreement between Forsyth County, the Winston-Salem Forsyth County Board of Education. It provides school nursing services by Forsyth County Department of Public Health. I'll add item 10 to that. You probably can take them both at the same time. It is a resolution ratifying and authorizing execution of interlocal agreement between Forsyth County and Winston-Salem Forsyth County Board of Education. That was essentially for medical, medically fragile and special needs children, and that the schools associated or affected are Children's Center, Special Children's School, Petrie, Lawrence Middle, and Carter High School.
Move approval for items nine and 10.
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Pliler, second by Commissioner McDaniel, and Commissioner Alamein. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Agenda item 11 is resolution authorizing execution of an agreement between Forsyth County and Intellichoice Staffing. They provide temporary employment services for COVID-19 response for the Department of Public Health. This is part of that fairly significant grant award to receive. I think the, it's $4 million, actually.
Move approval.
Second.
Approved by Commissioner Pliler.
Second.
Second by Commissioner McDaniel. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Item 12 is resolution authorizing execution of a contract between Forsyth County and Wake Forest University Baptist Medical Center. It provides medical direction services at the Department of Public Health. This is a three-year term, not to exceed $582,912.
Move approval.
We have two motions to approval, one by Commissioner Pliler and Commissioner Alamein. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner McDaniel. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Item 13, you heard from the sheriff wanting to award a contract for the purchase of law enforcement service weapons and for the sale of trade-in property. They're going to piggyback on state contract after the trade-in. I think the net cost is about $3,220.90.
Move approval.
Motion made by Commissioner Pliler. There a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner McDaniel. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Agenda item 14 is resolution authorizing execution of an agreement to purchase real property subject to a due diligence examination and authorizing execution of all necessary agreements to make a diligent examination of the property. Property address is 3810 North Liberty Street. The purchase amount, $725,000.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Pliler, second by Commissioner Alamein. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Item 15 is resolution accepting the highest offer to purchase county-owned real property by negotiated offer advertisement upset bid procedure. It's 3554 Clemmons Road. That is the former Clemmons Branch Library. Sale price would be $715,000.
Move approval.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Pliler.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Alamein and Commissioner Whizen Hunt. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And you have a number of appointments, Mr. Vice Chairman. I don't know how you're going to handle all parts of this, but we'll dive into them.
Thank you very much, Mr. Watts. We've had, we have a lot of appointments. Some are still vacant, but we had a really exceptional group of people who requested to serve. Let's remind everyone, this is voluntary service, and I really appreciate all those willing to step up. In fact, it was very hard to say no to some of the folks that requested. We had a lot of interest in some positions. And we'll sort of walk through this, and let me get my ballots in place. Here we go. The Adult Care, Home Care, excuse me, Adult Home Committee Advisory Committee. Actually, we have seven appointments available. We had no applicants, and we will continue that to a future meeting. For the Animal Services Advisory Board, we have one appointment to a two-year term for an at-large position, and we have two citizens wishing to serve for that one spot, Michelle Connolly and Jane Warbington. Please vote for one, please.
Mr. Vice Chairman, Michelle Connolly received majority vote.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Also, for the Animal Services Advisory Board, we have one appointment for a two-year term for the owner of a fertile hunting dog. We do have one citizen wishing to serve, George Francisco. And I'd like to make a motion that we consider appoint Francisco by acclamation. Motion second by Commissioner Pliler. Discussion, oops, we've got to vote. Actually, we can vote. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion by acclamation. Thank you. We have a committee appearance, excuse me, Community Appearance Commission, Winston-Salem Forsyth County. We had no applicants, and we will postpone to a future meeting. We have Commission on Indian Homelessness, Winston-Salem Forsyth County. Again, no applicants, and we will continue to a future meeting. And we have the Community Child Protection Team, Child Fatality Prevention Team. Again, no applicants, and we will continue to advertise to a future meeting. For the Forsyth County Historic Resources Commission, we have two appointments, four-year terms, and we have two at-large seats, and we have four persons wishing to serve, Dylan Allen, Veronica Cromen, Chrome, excuse me, Elena Meltzer Holyfield, and Noah Reynolds. Please vote for two.
Mr. Vice Chairman, Veronica Crom and Noah Reynolds received majority votes.
Thank you very much. Also, for Forsyth County Historic Resources Commission, we have one appointment to a four-year term for a licensed architect. We have two architects wishing to serve, Edwin Bolden and David Byington. Please vote for one.
Mr. Vice Chairman, Edwin Bolden received majority vote.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. For the Forsyth County Juvenile Crime Prevention Council, we have one appointment to a two-year term for an at-large seat, and we have four citizens wishing to serve, Myra Bumgardner, Denise Hartsfield, Lisa Lark, and Crystal Simmons. Please vote for one.
Mr. Vice Chairman, Denise Hartsfield received unanimous vote.
All righty, thank you very much, Madam Clerk. We also have a Forsyth County Juvenile Justice Crime Prevention Council, one appointment for a district court judge, and we do have a district court judge, Judge Ted Gazakis, please. We can, I'd like to make a motion that we approve Judge Gazakis's appointment by acclamation.
I'll second the motion.
Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. We also, for the Forsyth County Juvenile Crime Prevention Council, we have one appointment to our local management entity, MCO Director, our Designee, and we have a person, Jackie Copeland from Partners, who's willing to serve, and I'd like to make a motion that we approve Jackie Copeland's appointment by acclamation.
I'll second the motion.
Second by Commissioner Pliler. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Also, for the Forsyth County Juvenile Crime Prevention Council, we have one appointment to a two-year term for a member of the faith community. We do have Pastor Ronald McCray, who is available to serve. I'd like to make a motion, we approve his appointment by acclamation.
Second the motion.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Forsyth County Juvenile Crime Prevention Council, we have one appointment to a two-year term for a substance abuse professional. We do have one, Sanja Long Williams. I'd like to make a motion, we approve Ms. Williams by acclamation.
Second the motion.
Second by Commissioner Pliler. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Also, for Forsyth County Juvenile Crime Prevention Council, we have an appointment to a person under the age of 21. We have no applicants. We will continue to a future meeting. For the Industrial Facilities and Pollution Control Financing Authority, we have a one, we have several appointments available. There are no applicants. We need to continue it to a future, that, those appointments to a future meeting. For Forsyth Memorial Hospital Triad Region Board of Trustees, there are five appointments for three-year terms, and actually, they have various, we have two incumbents wishing to serve, Robert Landry and Rex Welton, and three citizens wishing to serve, Todd Hall, Emmon, excuse me, Maroffi, and Christine Sims. And all of these, I'd like to make a motion, we approve all of those by acclamation.
I'll second the motion.
Second by Commissioner Pliler. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. For the Nursing Home Committee Advisory, Community Advisory Committee for Forsyth County, we have three appointments. We have no applicants. We can continue to a future meeting. Next, we have the Pymott Triad Regional Workforce Development Board. We have one appointment to a two-year term for the category of a business representative, and we have two citizens wishing to serve, Linda McCray and Yolanda Smith.
Mr. Vice Chairman, Linda McCray received majority vote.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. For the Risk Management Advisory Committee of Forsyth County, we have two appointments for county representatives. We have one incumbent wishing to serve, Stephen Poff. I'd like to make a motion, we approve Mr. Poff by acclamation.
I'll second the motion.
Second by Commissioner Pliler. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
For the Smiths-Renaults Airport Board, we have four appointments, three-year terms, two regular members, one county resident, and one president Forsyt Tech, our Designee. We have two incumbents wishing to serve, Gail Anderson, a regular member, Nicholas Pierce, a regular member. I'd like to make a motion that those two be approved by acclamation, and we continue to advertise for the remaining.
Second the motion.
Second by Commissioner Pliler. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
For the Tourism Development Authority, we have one appointment to a three-year term, and we have the capacity as a hotel motel operator of 104 rental units. We have one incumbent wishing to serve, Kelly Brown. I'd like to make a motion that Kelly Brown be approved by acclamation.
Second the motion.
Second by Commissioner Pliler. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
For the Utility Commission, we have one appointment to a five-year term, and the capacity is open. Anyone interested? And we have one citizen wishing to serve, Harold Estashi, and I'd like to make a motion, we approve Mr. Estashi by acclamation.
Second the motion.
Second by Commissioner Pliler. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All righty, along with this, thank you. Thank all of those who were willing to serve and are appointed.
We have some refund matters. Agenda item 31 is a resolution approving refunds by the tax assessor collecting the amount of $1,439.64, North Carolina Vehicle Tax System. I think you can probably take 32, 33, and 34 together. 32 is a resolution authorizing refunds, the amount of $3,355.37. That's assessed refunds over $100. You've got some refunds that generated out of the Board of Equalization in review in the amount of $22,421.10. And then item 34, we'll take, take those three together.
Move approval of all three.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Pliler, second by Commissioner Limble. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, and item 34 is a tax matter, but it's a little different. It's a resolution extending the year 2022 tax listing period. We extend that to mid-February. I'm looking for, I see John Burgess's head bob up and down, so.
Move approval.
Approval, a motion made by Commissioner Pliler. Second by Commissioner Limble. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Items 35 and 36 are also refunds. You've got the 35 is a tax assessor collecting refunds under $100, Board of Equalization Review, and then you've got the tax assessor collecting refunds under $100.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Pliler, second by Commissioner Limble. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
We have three added items. The first one's item 37. It's a resolution approving the amount to be spent by the Winston-Salem Forsyth County Board of Education to acquire land to be used for future Brunson Elementary School site. That would authorize, the county attorney may want to interject, but that would authorize the school board to pay $2,243,626 for that site. It was brought in fairly quickly because of the timing of the school board meeting, but Daryl Walker is here if you have any questions.
How old is that school?
Daryl, you better come on up.
Yeah, that school's been here ever since I was born, I think.
Want to tell you age, what year was that? Sure, it's an early 50s building, from what I recall.
Early 50s.
Yes, sir.
So it's an Eisenhower-era school.
Yes, sir.
Right, okay. That's all the question I had. Okay. It's good. We've had a lot of discussion about this. In fact, the schools, the school district's been looking for a site for a new Brunson replacement for a long time. Is there a motion to approve the request from Winston-Salem Forsyth County?
Oh, move.
Commissioner Pliler makes a motion. Second by Commissioner Alamein. Any discussion? All in favor of approval, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed?
Very good. Vice Chairman, I'm going to jump down to item 39 because we are waiting on a guest to come, but we can take this one. It is a proclamation recognizing the accomplishments of Jerry Bates on the occasion of his retirement as the city county purchasing director. Jerry did not want to be recognized in this setting, but will be recognized in a special event that we're having tomorrow. But I don't know if somebody wants to read that, or, but anyway, we do need to take action on that one.
Oh, we ought to have somebody. Gosh, how many years has he been here? Not to say something nice about him?
Yeah, Jerry, you know, we try to honor everybody's requests, but I will say Jerry's been a terrific leader. You know, he's technically and administratively, he's an employee of the city of Winston-Salem, but he is, he does serve for Forsyth County in that role in the joint city-county department. So he's Joint City-City Department Director. I will say to this, and he will say this tomorrow to you directly, but he appreciates you very much, and he is, he very much has enjoyed serving Forsyth County, and he served for Forsyth County really, really well. You know, departments have some autonomy about whether or not they sort of pull in purchasing to handle different kinds. purchasing to handle different kinds of bids, and so sometimes they can do it internally with staff, sometimes they pull in purchasing, but what you've seen really throughout Jerry's career has been that, that county, he takes work off of us, and you know it's right when he gets finished.
Our last loss to someone else, again, he's gonna.
I think he's gonna go play golf, is what I think he's gonna go do, so.
I hope he shoots in the 60s, or lower.
If it pleases the board, I have the proclamation, I'd be happy to read it.
Yes, sir.
All right. This is a proclamation recognizing the accomplishments of Jerry Bates on the occasion of his retirement as the City-City Purchasing Director. Whereas Jerry Bates began his career in the City-City Purchasing Department on December 14th, 2009. Whereas during Jerry Bates' career in the City-City Purchasing Department, he has served as Purchasing Director with distinction. Whereas Jerry Bates has accomplished academically, holds a Bachelor of Arts degree from Ball State University in Muncie, Indiana. Whereas Jerry Bates, for his exceptional professional accomplishments, received the Supervisor of the Year Award for the City of Winston-Salem in 2018. Now therefore, be it proclaimed, that Forsyth County Commissioners hereby recognize the exemplary service and accomplishments of Jerry Bates, and thank him for his outstanding and distinguished service to the state of North Carolina and the citizens of Forsyth County. Glad we get to tell him that personally tomorrow.
Second the motion.
All righty. Thank you. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All righty, so we are living right, because that was immaculate timing for the next item, so this is amazing. So, item 38 is a proclamation recognizing the accomplishment of Paul L. Fulton on the occasion of his retirement as the Forsyth County Chief Financial Officer, and recognizing his service after 48 years with the county. So this is a momentous occasion, and we have, it was so important that, that our state treasurer Dale Falwell decided to come to this event, and I'll turn it over to you, Mr. Vice Chairman, to take us through this.
I'd like to invite Treasurer Falwell to come forward. It's always a pleasure to see him. In fact, I saw him on the Zoom meeting for four hours yesterday with the State Health Plan, and I really appreciate his, his coming over to do this special recognition. I'm gonna let him go first, and then I'm gonna ask our county manager, Dudley Watts, has something he wants to share. I'll do a proclamation for the entire group, and then each of you will have an opportunity to say something about Paul. So we've kind of got a four-step process here, and it's a real pleasure to turn over the podium to our treasurer of the state of North Carolina, and I do have something for him to present, and he may want to make a comment or two before we begin.
And we do have, we do have some family members here. I'll see if Ashley can handle that part.
Mr. Manager, we have Paul's daughters here, Rhea and Holly, if you'll please come forward.
And I would just make mention that, that Paul is participating virtually, and so I think he and his dear wife Vera are on the line. Vera, are you there?
Here we are. Yeah, she's here, Dudley.
Well, even, I mean, not even better. We're glad you're here, you're here. Paul, thank you.
Thank you, Dudley.
Can you see our distinguished chairman, our distinguished state treasurer on your screen?
Yes, I can.
And we can now see you. It is so good to see you, Paul.
Great to see you all.
Thank you, Mr. Watts, and Vice Chair Martin, and members of the board. It's, as you can tell, Dr. Martin's been doing this to me for about 26 years, so when he says, "Do this," I just go and, and read, so it's, it's really great to be here. I have the distinct honor this afternoon to read the proclamation by the governor of North Carolina, Roy Cooper, bestowing the state of North Carolina order of the long leaf pine on Paul Fulton. I'll do that in just a moment, but some of you have seen some of us wear the NC lapel pin many times, and that most often stands for the word "North Carolina." But in respect to the public service of Paul Fulton, it also stands for "Nothing Compares." It's not often that I get to come to Winston on Thursdays, but this is one reason for doing so. When I was explaining why I wasn't gonna be in Raleigh tomorrow, and told folks about Paul's distinguished career, they said, "Well, we didn't know that you could retire that early." I said, "No, you didn't listen." Forty-six years of public service, he's not 46 years old, and it's just a testament to the work that he has done, and the sacrifices that he has made. And I'm joined by his family, who I've known for decades, and just want to remind them, remind Paul, remind everyone who's listening, that it's not just the ones that serve in public service, it's the spouses and the children of people who are also public servants. So with that, I'd like to take an opportunity to read this and present it. Now, I haven't seen these ladies in a long time. They were actually shorter than I was the last time I saw them, but we're glad that you're here. The state of North Carolina, Roy Cooper, Governor, reposing special confidence in the integrity, learning, and seal of Paul L. Fulton, Jr. I do by these present and confer the order of the long leaf pine. With the rank of ambassador extraordinary, privileged to enjoy fully all rights presented to members of this exalted order, among which is the special privilege to propose the following North Carolina toast to select company anywhere in the free world. Here in the land of the long leaf pine, the summer land where the sun don't shine, where the weak grow strong and the strong grow weak, the strong grow great, here's to down home, the Old North State, signed by Governor Roy Cooper on December 1st of 2021. Paul, congratulations on being one of the most worthy recipients in my 26-year public career of the Order of the Long Leaf Pine. Congratulations.
Thank you, Dave, and I sincerely appreciate that.
We are not done.
Well, it certainly knows one of the things I wanted forever and ever was the Order of the Long Leaf Pine, so this is certainly a very good personal accomplishment for me. I really do appreciate it.
We would like to say congratulations to you, Dad. When we first started looking up at what this award is and what it means, and we saw fellow recipients like Oprah Winfrey, Maya Angelou, and Michael Jordan, we were like, "Wow, how is Dad getting this award? That's amazing." And then we started reading about Dad's career as he was retiring, and we were just blown away by all that you've done, so congratulations, Dad, on an incredible career and an outstanding award.
And I'd just like to add, one of the things that has meant so much to me, as someone who's worked for the county, for the city, for the school system, is every time I enter a room, people say, "Oh, you must be Paul's daughter." And every time they say it, they say it with such admiration and affection. Everybody who meets my dad knows how dedicated he is to this community, loves to work with my dad, and I am so lucky to have been able to follow in his footsteps, and I'm so proud to call you my dad. So thanks so much to all of you, and thank you, Dad, for everything that you've done for us.
So let's go ahead and do the proclamation while they're there, since that takes another board action, Mr. Vice Chair, if that's okay?
Pleasure for me to present the proclamation recognizing the accomplishments of Paul L. Fulton on the occasion of his retirement as Forsyth County Chief Financial Officer. Whereas Paul L. Fulton began his tenure with Forsyth County Government as an internal auditor with the Finance Department in 1974, and has ably served the citizens of Forsyth County for more than 47 years. Whereas during Paul L. Fulton's career in Forsyth County Government, he has served as Assistant Finance Director and Chief Financial Officer, all with distinction. Whereas Paul L. Fulton has accomplished academically, and holds a Bachelor of Arts degree from Elon College, and a Master of Business Administration in Financial Management from the University of North Carolina at Greensboro. Whereas Paul L. Fulton is a past president of the North Carolina Association of County Finance Officers Association, and a past director of the Piedmont-Winston-Salem Chapter of the Institute of Management Accountants. Whereas Paul L. Fulton's other professional associations include American Institute of Certified Public Accountants, the North Carolina Association of Certified Public Accountants, and the Association of Government Accountants. Whereas Paul L. Fulton's served on North Carolina's Association of County Commissioners Committees, North Carolina State Treasurer's Public Finance Advisory Committee, and as a governor's appointee to the North Carolina State Bar Council and its Grievance Committee. Whereas Paul L. Fulton, for his exceptional professional accomplishments, received the Outstanding North Carolina County Finance Officers Award from the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners in 1999. The Outstanding Member of Government Award from the North Carolina Association of Certified Public Accountants in 2008, and the CFO of the Year from the Triad Business Journal in 2010. Now therefore, be it proclaimed, that the Forsyth County Commissioners hereby recognize the exemplary service and accomplishments of Paul L. Fulton, and thank him for his outstanding and distinguished service to the state of North Carolina and the citizens of Forsyth County. And ladies, I have a copy of the frame. Thank you very much, and now, I think our fellow, we can clap for that, and, oh, I have motion, we'll do that. We do need to complete the action. I'll make the motion that we accept the proclamation.
I'll second the motion.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. I know that all of you would probably like to say something, and we can start with the commissioner, though I know has worked with him almost, almost all of his tenure.
Now, I hope you're doing well, Paul. I've known Paul for many years, and Paul is from, well, first let me say that he's, he's been a dedicated keeper to the purse strings of Forsyth County. Paul is from, I don't know when I got to know him, it's many years back, is from Bennettsville, South Carolina, which is a rural area, is raised up there, and knowing his rural area, and a lot of farming going on there. I used to talk to him about that a lot, and it's just, they made some farm equipment there. It was originally, way back during the war, it was an airbase, and Paul told me all about that, and he, he knew quite a bit about everything, knew a lot about farming, and knew about this, I was trying to tell him about this man that owned this business, and Paul knew of that man, so he could, he told me more about it than I knew, and he knew a whole lot about farming, too, so I suppose Paul knew enough about farming that he thought there was probably a better way. You're probably right, Paul. Hope you're well.
Paul, I just wanted to say thank you for your compassion for the county. I also say, "Well done, good and faithful servant," and I hope that you enjoy your retirement. So thank you for all that you've done for us.
Paul, when I was, when I was elected, God, how long ago was that? It was a while ago. I knew, I knew Paul when I was working at WXI Television, and if we wanted to comment on whether the budget had taxes, whether we were going sky-high or going low, there was only one person that I immediately thought of, and that was Paul Fulton, because that was the gospel. If Paul Fulton said it, that's the way it was, that's the way it'll be, and never forget, he commented one time, when we did raise taxes in here, and I wasn't even close to running for the county commission board, but when Paul Fulton said it, everybody at, where I worked at Channel 12, that was the gospel, you just took it. And then I remember Paul from, he was a Y guy. He'd come over and he would go to the Y, work out, and he had some good and bad experiences. I know one of us had a fine restaurant right across the street from the children's zone, but we won't go into that, Paul, because I don't think you really care about going into it, but I noticed that you teared up, and I'm close to it, so Godspeed, Paul.
Thank you, Dave.
Yeah, Paul, it's, we're gonna miss you around here. I remember calling Paul a few years ago, and in the background, I heard this cranking machine, and I go, "What is that?" He says, "My calculator." I said, "You still got a hand-levered calculator?" Yeah, it's trusty, so I, I've worked with Paul when I was in legislature, working on county stuff, and then here, and it's been great, and Paul, I wish you well. You have done a phenomenal job for us, a little conservative, but the books are straight, so thank you very much.
Mr. Fulton, I think one of the first departments I went into was your department when I was elected in 2017, replaced Walter Marshall. Always open, always precise, and what really came to mind, when I was a corporate banker, we used the three Cs to determine loan feasibility, you know, credit, character, collateral. You represent three Cs of character all the way through. High standards, demanding perfection, as close to it as you can get, and just a heartfelt human being, inviting others to learn from what you know, and that's unique, so I wish you Godspeed, and thank you for all you've done. I've only known one other person Forsyth County's history that worked as long as you, and that was Eunice S., who worked for 50 years, and you're pretty close to that, I'm sure, with your 48. I'm sure you just picture in your mental capacity, thinking about county government. Thank you again, Paul, and Godspeed.
Hey, Paul.
Thank you, ma'am.
Hello, Paul. I've been missing you at tourism. Also, it will be very different this February for our budget workshop, because we've been seatmates for many, many years. I don't like to talk about the years, so we'll go past that. I do not agree with Commissioner Kaplan. You are very conservative, and I thank you for doing that. You have really taken care of the taxpayers in Forsyth County for a long time, and we appreciate it, and enjoy the holidays, Paul, and hope to see you soon.
Paul, this is Don. Sorry. It's a real pleasure for me to be able to, just be able to speak to you about your great service to the county, and I had the pleasure of kind of working with you for 19 years while serving as superintendent of schools, and so we had three bond issues, all the details surrounding that, all the campaigns where we had to figure out the cost of what the bond issue would be to the taxpayers, and we discussed, and you calculated all the details and provided all the information that, that we were able to share, and so that was a different relationship, and then being here, working more closely with you for the last seven years, has really increased my admiration for the tremendous sort of, both the conservatism, the safety, the excellence. I think excellence is one of the key issues, and I remember my first year, you know, we received this, you know, award from the Institute of Government, and it was nice, and it turned out, we'd received it every year since you'd been the finance officer, and all of those are hanging in the, in the hallway, so.
So you've certainly provided the gold standard for Forsyth County among this state, and that is really to be appreciated, and I certainly wish you the absolute best in this holiday season coming up, and certainly, and you have two lovely daughters who are here. They had, this is so long, they've had to sit down, take a little break, but really great, and I actually got to know them a little bit, and I really appreciate them being here to be a part of this for you. And I do know that Dudley has something at the end that he's going to share that he has written for you, so get ready.
But before you do that, Mr. County Manager, I'd like to say one more thing about Paul.
Yeah, please.
When I was elected to this board, we had a AAA rating, which, correct me if I'm wrong, is the best you can get in this country. And I want to make sure that was, I didn't want to forget that.
Very good. So Paul, as you know, most time when folks retire, I try to do something goofy. I'm the chief goofy officer or whatever this, and so I thought about what to do, and traditionally, actually, I wrote something, and I put it in a frame, and you were so kind to give me your Ryobi table saw and your chop saw, and so I built the frames for everything you got out of those saws, and they must not be straight, because my corners aren't good, but that's my carton tree, I don't know what it is. But anyway, so I thought about your service here. You started in 1974, and you started on April Fool's Day, if our data is correct. So I don't know if April Fool's Day is a good day to start, but it worked for you. And so I kind of built a poem around 1974 and your service here, and so I entitled it, "Great Things Happened in 1974." And it goes, "The amazing career began in '74, the same year the stock market crashed to the floor. Paul Fulton began to make his mark. Yes, on that April Fool's Day, he worked until dark. The economy was in a rut. I remember gas prices busting our gut. A steady financial mind started to define his pedigree and grew to lead a team that built a legacy. Nixon got caught and had to resign, but Ford jumped in and quickly pardoned his crime. Here locally, things were much more sedate. The county's financial future was going to be great. With Paul at the helm, we built schools and parks. Our reputation grew, and the budgets hit the mark. AAA ratings began to emerge, taxes were low, and revenue surged. So 48 years later, we celebrate the man who through the years built many a financial plan and dedicated his life to the county and state and to his kids, his friends, and Vera, his mate. In '74, Happy's Days began an 11-year run. We hope in retirement you have just as much fun. We wish you the best as you close this chapter, times with family, friends, and love and laughter." So I'll give this to your daughters.
I was afraid I was going to get a thong.
So I put it to music, and you cannot share it with anybody, because it's bad, but that's between me and you, buddy. Anything else, daughters? Paul, anything else you'd like to add?
I'd just like to add a couple of comments. First, I am so proud that you could do something like this in a virtual setting. I think it shows the commitment you've made to technology and to moving forward. I'm so proud to have been a county employee. I'm so gratified to have had such a career. I appreciate everything you did for me today. All the commissioners I've worked with, all the managers, all the different staff, and particularly the finance staff, because they're the ones who made all of this happen. If there's anyone I've left out, I feel that they will understand that I'm kind of clouded right now with emotion, but this was probably one of the biggest days of my life, and I really do appreciate it. So thank you all.
Limble, if he would come down. Got to come down here, Richard, you can't sit up there.
I've been so busy today, I didn't expect you. Paul, it's good to be recognized for you today. If we had time, we'd talk some more about farming. I know Paul got tired of me talking about farming, he thought I ought to be talking about finances, but I will say this, Paul, by being around you, I was at tax preparers at one time and going over some stuff, and I mentioned some things to them, and they thought, well, you know, where this farm guy learned all this about, I didn't know a lot, but I know the little, where this guy learned all this stuff about financing stuff? I told them I was around good people like you.
Pleasure to do, Treasurer Paul, well again, and this is a great opportunity for him to be here and make this present.
If the family can come on up, stand here, be good. My son Chad Limble, his wife Jessie, and the youngest grandson Carter. I've got one, the oldest one Luke, I don't know where he's at. He's 19, and you can wonder where that, and then I've got his other son, he's 18, I believe. He's off at school, so when they get grown, you know how this is, Ted.
Richard, there's someone in the audience you might want up here. She came to surprise you today.
I think so, and I got to say a little something, a little background information on this.
Well, maybe they've seen me on TV before.
Yeah. Jane, you going to come up? There you go. So this actually started about a year ago when Richard, when Richard started his...
Say older friend that I've known for a long time.
That's right. When Richard started his 40th year, this started getting, we started working on this. It came in a little late, and then in true Richard fashion, it's taken us a year to do this, so.
You know, when Richard Limble gets a tear in his eye, there's no stopping the rest of us. We're done. So I've seen all kinds of expressions on your face, but it was priceless when your family walked in here about three minutes ago. I could just see the wheels turning, but I'm so honored to be here, not only for Paul, but also for you. The state of North Carolina, Roy Cooper, Governor, reposing special confidence in the integrity, learning, and zeal of Richard V. Limble. You ever been described as having zeal before? We think you've got a lot of zeal. I do by this hereby present and confer the Order of the Long Leaf Pine. With the rank of ambassador extraordinary, privileged to enjoy fully all rights granted to members of this exalted order, among which is the special privilege to purpose the following North Carolina toast in which company everywhere in the free world were recognized. Here to the land of the long leaf pine, the summer land where the sun does shine, where the weak grow strong and the strong grow great, here to down home, the Old North State. Congratulations.
I would say a couple of things. Pretty hard to ask for much more than this. It is people that, you remember my wife, she was along the way on the, with me for however many years it was with this, it's a long time until a few years ago, so I would be remiss in not recognizing her for helping me along the way and trying to keep me on the right path, and all these people I've worked with over the years, and Jane Cole, and I couldn't, it'd take me a while to count all of the ones that, a lot of them gone, and sometimes I see some, and I'm so glad to see Jane here. James is the only one here that's known Paul longer than I have. You've probably known him for almost the whole time he's been here, so so glad you're here, and family got here. I told, was working on the farm, and I got ready to leave today. I told, I was working in a field, and he comes to get me when it was time for me to go in and get cleaned up, and I told him, I said, if you don't have too much more planning to do, go back and get that finished for me, so. Real surprise. Thank y'all.
If we could, why don't we take a recess for about 10 minutes?
Wait a minute, he's not through.
Oh, excuse me.
Mr. Vice Chair, I just want to say for the record, that's more than I've ever heard Richard Limble say in 26 years in total.
Thank you.